Everyone, we are glad that you're here today. Those of you that are joining online, thank you for doing that. We want to extend our special thanks to the Rogers School District for being a wonderful host today. I have gone above and beyond, and I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, but I have seen some great things today, seen things that I hope that we can see everywhere around the state before long, because I think here all means all. And so, we are very blessed to be here today and want to say thank you, Dr. Perry, for all that you have done for us today. We are very appreciative of it and for the learning that's taking place. The department, all of you that have worked hard for this today, because I know it's not easy to take this bunch offsite, and so, we appreciate that. We are given a better idea of why are we doing what we do? And so, and where do we want to go with what we're doing? So, we really, really want to say thank you today to all of you. We're going to begin today with a moment of silence, being thankful for all that we have seen and are doing. So, join me today. Thank you. We have some recognitions this morning, but I'm used to saying this morning, because we're usually starting at 10:00. But I do have a couple of recognitions that I want to do today. We have two new State Board members, and so, we are thrilled about that. One of them could not be here today, Mr. Woods. I had previous engagement, and he will soon be joining us next month. But he is a previous member of the Little Rock School Board. I worked on the Community Advisory Board and was very helpful during that process, and so, we want to say welcome to him. And then, also, Ms. Hunter, Lisa Hunter is here. She is working for the Simmons Bank and lives in Whitehall. And so, we are thrilled that she's here. I want to give you an opportunity to speak this morning or this afternoon, if you'd like.
Oh, wow. Was it excited? Is my mic on?
If you'll pull it closer to you, probably.
How's that? Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, so, I'll just say I am honored and humbled to be a part of this board. I know, just from the time this morning, I realize I have a lot to learn. I'm excited about that opportunity and just hope to serve the citizens, most specifically the students and children.
Welcome. We're glad that you're here.
Thank you.
All right. Yes.
If I've got a couple of other introductions, if I may, just acknowledge, we have Representative Delia Hawke is here. They're part of Rogers, is in her legislative district. And Representative Denise Garner, who is, I think you're in Washington County, right? Representative, okay. But, and I don't think I saw any other members come in, but we always appreciate our legislators coming, especially since we're in your backyard. So, welcome to our meeting today.
Welcome. We're very, very thankful that you're here. And we do have another recognition. This one is exciting. The Milken Educator Award winner, Ms. Torrance. Oh, no, Ms. Saracini.
Carly Saracini, Assistant Commissioner. I'm excited today, because these kind of recognitions just make what we do special. And so, today, each year, the Milken Family Foundation recognizes early-to-mid-career educators across the country for their excellent teaching, leadership, family, and community engagement. The foundation brings attention to these classroom heroes, like Ms. Kamisha, through the Milken Award, which is a $25,000 unrestricted reward directly to the educator, which is awesome. Since 1991, Milken has honored 77 of Arkansas's top educators. And today, I would like to present one of this year's recipients, Kamisha Burlingame. Ms. Burlingame is a fourth-grade teacher at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School in Bentonville. She is known for her building relationships with her students and creating imaginative lessons to keep her students engaged at all times. Ms. Burlingame, on behalf of the Milken Family Foundation and the State Board of Education, we are excited to present to you this obsolete congratulations. We're so excited.
The Milken Family Foundation in the state, like, I love working for the state of Arkansas and teaching. It's my passion. And so, receiving this award has been a whirlwind on its own. But I just enjoy what I do, and I do what I do because I love it.
Congratulations. We're very proud that you are an educator in Arkansas. And it says a lot when you say you love what you do, because when you love what you do as a teacher, you never work. You just go and do what you want. So, thank you for what you do for education. We are going to... Are there any changes to the agenda? Ms. Frino, kind of where are you at? There you are. Are there any changes to the agenda that you had? Okay. All right. We'll move on to the consent agenda. I know, Ms. McFetrich, you had something that you had noticed on the minutes.
I'll tell you. I think I was present last month, but I'm not listed.
Okay. All right. So...
I'm reflected in the minutes, right, in motions, but not actual statements.
Okay. All right. So, we'll need that to be adjusted. Commissioner Key is going to take care of that. Anything else on the consent agenda? I have just a comment and just offering another word of thanks this morning. I saw that under the newly-employed promotions and separations, it had mentioned Anthony Owen, and I know that he has done so much for this board. And I just wanted to express our appreciation to him personally for all the work that he has done for us over the time that we have been here on the board and how far that computer science has moved in Arkansas. So, we want to be sure and offer our thanks to them. Anyone else have something? I did, and it's on the sixth item on your agenda. It's case 22-119, the Kevin Moore case. And I don't... Ms. Frino, you'll have to help me a little bit here. I don't know how much I can actually say right now, but I did have a little bit of a problem with the amount of this sanction given in some of the previous history. So, I would like to pull that one and put it on the action agenda for next month. Is that the correct procedure?
Yes, Ms. Newton, it is. And Amy Douglas, who is our attorney for PLSB, is here to discuss the procedure in more detail.
Okay. Ms. Douglas?
Good afternoon, everyone. Yeah. So, all you would need to do is request that a review be set for next month and then state your rationale, but there cannot be any discussion.
Okay. So, could my rationale be that because of previous sanctions and previous history that I don't feel that this sanction is appropriate? Would that work for you, Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Do we need to vote to have that pulled, or would that just be automatic?
I believe it's automatic once a board member makes the motion or states the rationale.
Okay. So, we don't need a motion for that?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. All right. So, that is item six on your agenda. Are there any other comments or questions on the consent agenda?
I've noted the correction to the minutes.
All right. So, we need approval of consent agenda with the correction to the minutes? Motion by Ms. McFetrich? Seconded by Ms. Woods.
Ms. Newton, it would be an approval of the consent agenda without item six.
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I can't hear really well, so maybe I missed that, but I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Approval of consent agenda with the correction to the minutes and without item six. And so, we have a motion by Ms. McFetrich and a second by Ms. Woods. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. So, we'll move on to the action agenda. The first one is the Act 1240 Digital Learning Waivers.
Good afternoon. Deborah Kaufman, Assistant Commissioner of Public School Accountability. The Bay School District is requesting approval of their digital learning plan for students in grades 10 through 12. They previously had a one-year plan approved for the 21-22 year, and they're asking to extend that now. This program will offer synchronous and asynchronous learning through a virtual approach using curriculum provided by Lincoln Learning. Teachers are Arkansas certified, and they are provided by the content provider. The district is requesting to not use the class size and teaching load waivers. They have a very small number of students enrolled. This 1240 waiver is being requested by the district through the end of the 24-25 school year. The application has been reviewed by all of our DESI team throughout the process, that you know. Typically, you have given approval for up to two years now, so that all of our digital learning plans will come to the end at the same time or expire at the same time. So, we're requesting at DESI that you approve this 1240 waiver to expire June 30, 2024.
So, this would be a two-year plan, then?
Yes, ma'am.
Is... Are there any questions or discussion?
I did just... Yeah. I think you had to pull it real close for me to pick it up.
Yes. Just because it's in the, you know, schools already started? Is this a program that they've started this year? And do we know how many students are enrolled?
My understanding is that last year, they had two students, and at this time, they don't have any enrolled. But of course, you know, that could change during the school year.
Okay. And they want that as an option?
Yes, ma'am.
This, I probably have asked before, but in this case, could students roll into it midsemester? Or is it something that usually at the semester break is when they're going to move into the virtual?
Did you hear that, Ms. Kaufman?
I did. I don't know that I know the answer to that.
Would that be a local district decision?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Ms. McFetrich?
I noticed they were using Lincoln Learning and also, they were offering CTE classes and what they called ICEV. And I'm not sure I understand what ICEV is, but I'm curious as to how they were going to use both Lincoln Learning and then blend in the CTE classes. Can you talk a little bit about that?
I cannot. I don't... I don't see anyone on from the district.
Ross can address ICEV and give us some insight on that.
Ross White, Director for the Division of Career and Technical Education. So, ICEV is a supplemental curriculum piece that's available. They have a slew of different courses that are available. They have written curriculum for it, but it's really used as a supplemental. I know that as a state, we use it as a piece when COVID, when we were out of session, that a lot of districts capitalize on. We have a lot of districts who still use it, but it's just considered a supplemental piece to the instruction. It's not considered full instruction to that piece within the typical career and technical education classroom setting. Does that answer your question?
Their CTE courses, they will come in for those? Or is that still digital as well, or both?
I'm not fully aware on that one. That would probably be a more question from Ms. Kaufman. But, you know, it's going to give them the foundational knowledge. It's not going to give them the practical skill piece. ICEV is not designed to be the hands-on side of it, but it will give them the foundational skill or knowledge, I guess you'd say, not skill. The practical hand and skill piece will be missed in that part.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Sutton, did you have a question?
No, ma'am.
Anyone else? Okay. So, we have a digital learning plan before us from Bay School District. We're going to look at it for... The department is recommending for two years. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Okay. Ms... To approve?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion to approve by Mr. Sutton, the digital learning plan for the Bay School District for two years. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Mr. Henderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. We have now some rules. Final approval of DESI rules in governing nutrition and physical activity standards. Ms. Park, or who is going to do this one? I know it's...
I'm here via Zoom.
Okay.
Hello. I'm here with Jerry Clark and Sheila Chastain. You're also here in case there's any questions. But we have the final rules on nutrition and physical activity standards and body mass index for age assessment protocols in Arkansas public schools. They went out for public comment, and we had a hearing. Comments closed in the ninth seat. And we'll take any questions you have.
Any questions on these rules? Do we have a motion?
Comment. Just wondering if you couldn't add some examples of smart snacks on this? And maybe you'd already thought about putting these in the rules, but I thought it might be helpful to parents and teachers as well if there were some examples lined out on these regulations.
Did you hear that, Ms. Park?
I did. Sheila Chastain is on the line for child nutrition, so I'm going to see if she can answer that question.
I just thought it would be helpful.
Ms. Chastain, are you on?
Hey. Sorry about that. I forgot to turn on my camera. And yeah, I can address that. We have not put specific examples, because especially with product formulations and foods that would be purchased through that, they change so often. So, some things that might qualify now, a company could come back and reformulate the product and have the new and improved version, which might not meet the regulations set forth by USDA for smart snacks. So, that is why we did not include specific examples.
Okay. Thank you.
That makes sense?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the rules governing nutrition and physical activity standards and body mass index.
We have a motion to approve by Ms. McFetrich? Seconded by Dr. Hill. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're moving on now to consideration of request for approval of nominated members for the PLSB board. Ms. Saracini?
Carly Saracini, AC of Educator Effectiveness and Lysenger. And today, I'm bringing before you a recommendation, because Dr. Nina Bohannon has gone from one university to the next. And in doing so, she's left her leadership position. And this particular position on the PLSB board is the leadership nomination for the Arkansas Professors of Educational Leadership. And so, once you move from a position, then we have to have another recommendation for this position. The one that's being recommended by the Arkansas Professors of Educational Leadership is Dr. Annette Hutz of Arkansas State University to complete the term. And her term will end 2014, June of 2014.
2024.
I mean, 2024. Why did I say 2014?
I got the four right. All right. So, we have a new member proposed. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I have a motion by Ms. Woods. Seconded by Mr. Henderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
And our very short agenda that we have today. Our last item is consideration of charter authorizing panel decision. This was the Omni Classical Prep of Cabot. Ms... Who is?
Dory Summons. I'm here.
Here we go. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Dory Summons, DESI Charter Office. The Omni Classical Prep of Cabot submitted an application for an open enrollment charter school. The charter authorizing panel denied approval of the open enrollment charter application based on the following reasons. One, the need for additional work on the application to provide a clear explanation of financial, administrative, and educational structure. Number two, lack of continuity in the required application components, including a chain of command and segregation of duties. Number three, the need for a more detailed plan to fully address all the concerns of the panel. And number four, a lack of clarity regarding the administrative roles, fiscal guardrails, and special education student services. Four of the authorizing panel members voted for denial of the application, and two members voted against that denial. Ms. Bosch has also submitted an email requesting that the State Board not review the application of Omni Classical Prep of Cabot.
Thank you, Ms. Summons. Is there any discussion on this charter application?
Make sure I understand, because it's rare that we get one that hasn't been approved. Are we... Is the motion to go ahead and review the application, and then we make a decision? Or we are overriding what the charter authorizing panel wants?
We would review or not review their decision. If you decide not to review, then we would uphold their decision to deny.
Just, yes, just to make sure. I should know this, but if we vote to deny, like, to support the decision of the charter authorizing panel, do they... Is the cycle yearly? So, they would apply next year? If... And answer all these questions? Is that...
Yes. That's correct. It would start with the next application cycle.
Okay. And so, they have that, this runway time to get prepared for the next year?
Which is not uncommon for...
A first time.
A hopeful charter organization to come, get feedback their first application, and then come back in a future cycle to... To fill in the gaps, so to speak.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this application? So, let me make sure that you're clear. If we vote to, or if you ask to review, then we would be looking at the denial that the charter office did. If you vote to not review, then we would be upholding the denial of the charter authorizing panel. And Ms. Frino is nodding at me. I'm okay. All right. So, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion not to review.
Okay. So, I'll go with it. Ms. McFetrich made a motion to not review, and Mr. Sutton seconded into that motion. And so, to not review the charter decision. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We are to the new business section, and the only thing that I have here is... I got this from NASP this week, I think. It's for the meeting that they're going to have in October. And there is... Each board will have a delegate that will be looking at some elections and then changes also to their amendments. So, each board has one delegate. And I know that Dr. Moore is up for election for incoming chair. Is that correct?
Yes. The chair elects.
Chair elect. And then, Ms. McFetrich has also stated that she will be attending in... Chair elect and then Ms. McFetris has also stated that she will be attending in October also. I don't know if any other board members are going to the NASB meeting in October, but I I would assume that we would need to elect someone to be our delegate to at that meeting, so. Okay. All right.
That's fine with me. I was gonna say, if you wanted, I don't know if I need to be, if I would be there anyways. I'm not sure if it would be helpful for you to be in the room. I'm not sure.
So you two work it out among yourselves. So she's up for chair, she's up for election for chair elect, is that correct?
Right, so I think I would be in the room anyway. So if we if you were the representative, then you would get to be there too and see that process. But if that's not something you're interested in, I'm happy to do it. Right.
Why don't you pull your microphone so Mr. Sutton can hear what what your discussion is? So so one of you make that as a motion.
Well, so then if if Kathy was our representative, you would get to participate as well. Would that be okay with you?
Okay, so I think I heard a motion by Dr. Moore that Kathy be the delegate. Do we have a second? All right, seconded by Ms. Woods and all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Ms. McFetris, you are our official delegate and I'm gonna hand this down to you. And that's the packet and and so I'm sure you two, you two will represent us well a- at the NASB meeting. Is there anything else? All right, we're going to take a break and let Ms. Sharon gather up her stuff because she has a long drive. Just we're we're gonna talk, how about we take a ten minute break? That work? Ten minute break and then we'll we'll come back in just a few minutes. What time is it? One thirty five? So at one forty five, we'll be back. And we'll see if any board members have something that they would like to say. And again, I want to offer my thanks to to Rogers School District, Grace Elementary for their very informative and and very helpful tour that we got this morning morning and it helped us put together some of the things that we've been talking about for PLCs, inclusive practices. And so we really appreciate them for their hard work today. Any other board members have something you would like to share? Here. Over here, anyone else? Mr. Sutton, do you have anything?
No, I'm I'm just glad to see that we have a legitimate banker added to the board.
We we have two finance experts on the board now. Y'all will have to fight it out every once in a while. But we are very grateful that we've had both of your expertise on the board.
Oh, mate. Thank you.
Ms. Ms. Wally, can you help me out with a couple of dates that we had talked about before? I want to just remind the board members of the the training at the end of September that they are invited to. Would you mind coming to the microphone and giving us those dates and information? Just to kind of remind them of being, because I think it's very helpful for us as as board members to get out in schools, to have contact with administrators and teachers. And this is a chance for us to to hear from superintendents and and school board members during the implementation of the PLC process. So could you give us another invite?
Yes, absolutely. I would love for y'all to join us on September the twenty sixth and twenty seventh. You can come both days, but you're going to hear the same information if you come both days. So you can do the twenty sixth or twenty seventh. And in total, there will be sixty eight teams who are invited to the table. We will have districts, we will have co-op teams, we will have higher education, school board members, representatives, legislators. So hopefully we will have a representative from everyone at the table. And we're learning together on leading PLCs, district wide, regionally and statewide. So I hope that y'all will be able to join us and I will make sure that I send you an updated invitation for those days and just let me know. It will be at the Benton Events Center and it is from nine to three both days.
So hopefully board members, if you get a chance, either on the twenty sixth or twenty seventh, or if you're ambitious both days, but to go in and be a part and and learn more about what districts are doing with the PLC process. All right. Anything else for board members?
I was I was just wanting to make mention, I had a trip with Stacy in Pine Bluff and she's doing a wonderful job. We met down there, worked on some projects for after school programming to address the learning and things. And she's she's in, she's she's in it deep and I was able to spend a day with her there. And so you all would have been proud of of how involved she is and and within within the community and and trying to pull everything together to to meet the standards of, just like they've talked about today, for for all children. And so I just wanted to commend her for her part work to for being there.
Yes, we we are very grateful for Ms. Smith and her her team that's working hard with Pine Bluff and and other districts around the state. So we are very appreciative of that. Any other thing else from board members?
Our Teacher of the Year, I don't I don't think your name is Mrs. Anna Post.
It's not. I wasn't gonna be offended, no.
Ms. Sum, we are looking forward to hearing your report today.
I'm gonna see if I can share my screen. If, oh, it's disabled. Try. Okay, there it is. Okay, okay. And then I can Okay. Um, I don't know where the button is to go and, but I'll just do it like this. So I just was gonna share some pictures of some things I've had the opportunity to do over the last month. Back to school started. And so one of the pictures, that first picture on the left is me with my kids. I've never dropped my children off at school on a first day of school. But we always took our back to school picture on the front porch together. And so it was really neat for me to get to be a mom on the first day of school this year. But true to myself, I got there and they're like, hey, you want to help kids come in the building? So I threw on my roller skates and then walked in with a couple of kids and that was a lot of fun. And then the picture in the middle is just at the Cabot School District back to school convocation event. And so it was really good to just to be in a room with that many educators. I felt more positive energy than I've felt in the past few years, just that the COVID fatigue seems to be waning a little bit and that people are excited to be back with students and excited to be back at school. And that was encouraging for me. I wanted to share some pictures. I've got a couple of slides from the teacher night at the Travis. I was hoping there wouldn't be a huge crowd in case I didn't get the baseball all the way there. But there was a really great crowd and I got it close enough. We'll go with that. It was caught at the plate. But it was really great to, again, to be with educators and celebrating educators. And then the picture on the left is some of the finalists from all across the state. And one thing I really want to see happen over this year is to continue to engage with these educators. Because these are, these are the top educators in the state right now. And when we think about advocacy and we think about the message we want to share to the state and to the nation about the amazing things happening in education, these are some of the people we can look to. And so I'm really excited to continue going in their schools to highlight their work, to highlight their impact, to learn with them and just celebrate everything that they have done and are continuing to do. Here's just a couple more pictures. Some of the other A toys were there as well and it it's just, it's really neat to continually highlight and celebrate the amazing work of educators across the state. Something I've started saying and I've been putting it in social media posts is Arkansas educators are amazing. And I believe that and I see that and to be able, it's such a privilege. We don't get to leave our schools or our districts and go see what other teachers are doing as classroom educators. And to walk into these buildings and today, I mean, I had tears in my eyes multiple times. That is my heart. Like these inclusive practices, I have, I've believed it for so long, I've lived it. But to see it as it's not just what we should do, it's what we are going to do. Our state is supporting it and to see schools having success with it, it just, it is amazing. So all, I mean, my head was doing this the whole time. And I remember the first time I heard Matt Sewell speak and Robin Schrebling speak at one of their trainings. I'm looking around the room like, is everybody else hearing it too? Like this is, this is the future. And when we say all means all and we mean it and we stop the, we're, we've been stifling children with low expectations and that's going to stop and it's going to be better. And they're going to be given access, basic access to this curriculum that they all deserve, that every child deserves. It's really exciting to see and it's exciting to see it being successful. I wanted to share another picture of the Starbase ribbon ribbon cutting at Little Rock Air Force Base. Dr. Pfeffer was speaking there as well and Weeta was able to join. This is happening at the education building outside of Little Rock Air Force Base and is going to be able to provide some STEM activities and experiences to students starting in fifth grade all across the state. And they are hoping to continue to offer other Star base locations and engage with additional grade levels as the years go on. And I think it's exciting too because we do have a larger military presence in central Arkansas, but that students are going to have these opportunities. And that's what I keep seeing with so much that's happening right now, opportunities to see themselves in the future, what their next steps are. And you know, maybe it's not college, but it's career and community and life ready. And this provides them some of those experiences. I got, like I said, I got to go on some school visits. The teacher on the left is my mentor teacher from when I did my student teaching back in two thousand and eleven. And she's still teaching at the school that I student taught with her at. And so she was my first official visit. I got to go back into the school and see how they are implementing inclusive practices and see the work that they're doing there. And then this is another school where they're actually using some PBS Rise and Shine episodes to supplement education in the class. And so those episodes are still available online. There's still some enrichment activities to go with them. And teachers can pull that and use it in their lesson plans to continue to extend it. And the kids, when I were there, they were all looking back at me, that's you, that's you, you know? And then they're like, how do you, how was Clifford? You know, they were way more excited about Clifford than me. But but just to see like that that learning didn't just stop over the summer. This is a resource that will continue to be able to be used and support students across the state. These were just some other visits. I don't think I was able to share the visit. We hadn't been to Spring Day. We hadn't been to Spring Dayel last month to visit one of the four finalists. So that is her on the right. And then this was just in another school. The student in the middle was receiving services supplemented in the school from the Arkansas School for the Blind. And the teacher that was there that was working with him was teaching about Braille. And the students in the class were saying, can you come back and teach us more? We want to learn more about this. And she said, no, I can't, but he can. And so she empowered this student who was struggling with having to learn Braille, that now he's the expert. He gets to read in the dark, he gets to share something with other students. And she's taken something that's been a struggle for him and made him just an amazing piece of the classroom that he gets to now share and lead. And then Artemis One, you know, and a reason to dress up. I love a good costume. So I got to wear my Space Camp spacesuit and go into two different schools. The launch was scrubbed, but we've got to share with students about Artemis One, the future of the moon missions and the Mars missions ahead of that. I got to share some of the experiences I had had at Space Camp and some of the learning I had experienced there. And we actually had a video that we had interviewed Amy Buck, who is the youngest lead materials engineer ever to work in NASA. She's a graduate from Cabot High School, and she went to Southside Elementary, one of the schools I was at, and we interviewed her, and she shared her story that when she was in fifth grade, she went to Space Camp, and she fell in love with it. And she had another teacher in high school that took her back in high school, and then she got into Auburn but couldn't afford it. And he helped her find resources and financial aid so that she could go. And now, everything orange on the outside of Artemis, she helped design. And I was sitting in a classroom, and I said, you know, now we're going to have a woman on the moon. We're going to have brown skin, we're going to have black skin. And an Asian student looked at me, she said, are they going to have my tan skin? I was like, absolutely. And so these students could see themselves, this is, you know, these are young children saying, I have a place in the space program, I have a place, whether it's a dietitian, an astronaut, an engineer, there's a future for me contributing to this. And that was just really, really exciting. And the last video, or the last picture I have, was me making good on a promise. I had a friend last summer say, I want to skydive for my 40th birthday. And I said, absolutely not. I will not do that with you. And she said, well, what about if you win Arkansas Teacher of the Year? I said, okay, sure. If I win Arkansas Teacher of the Year, I will skydive with you. And so on August 13th, I made good on that. And that was my, if I win A-TOY, that's what I'll do. So I wanted to share a picture from that as well. And it was, I was really calm until they opened that door. And, you know, doors aren't supposed to open on airplanes in the air. And it was, I was like, oh my, what have I done? So, but that was really exciting. So we'll have to think of something amazing for the next A-TOY to have to do. We're going to be visiting them throughout the month of September and then deciding between those final four. So that is all I have to share for today. I think that's, if I can stop share, there we go. So I thank you, thanks for listening.
I'm glad that wasn't a requirement when I was Teacher of the Year.
We'll think of something.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Thank you very much for that. Secretary Key?
All right, thank you, ma'am chair. Just a quick note about the, you know, you've probably been keeping up with the ARP-ESR funds process, the districts that have been submitting, and then it's been going to the Legislative Council Peer Committee. So we are now in the home stretch, I think, of getting those, all of those submitted and reviewed by the committee. Somewhere less than 80, it's kind of a rolling number, and it changes periodically, regularly, I should say. The last count I had, we had 79 districts left. It's probably fewer than that now that have submitted. So I would say with maybe a couple more weeks, we have districts that are going and getting their plans reviewed, possibly revised, and approved by their boards. So we should be finishing that up soon. And at least for this year, all of those district-level plans, or however many of those plans, will be approved for the remainder of this fiscal year, school year. Make sure there aren't any questions on that, because that's been kind of a running story over the last few weeks. And since we only get together once a month, you may have had questions about that that you didn't get a chance to ask.
Anyone have a question? Yeah?
Okay. All right, then I will move on to the next part of my report. I don't have a presentation, but we do have an update on the Arkansas teacher residency model. So I'm not sure if Ivy, if you, or Carly, or Edie, or who might come up and brag about that, or maybe all of you could come and brag about that, because I think we have some. And it's a slide that's posted in the agenda on the website, so.
So the data is in your agenda there, so that slide has the data. And I think Ms. Newton, that is kind of along the lines of what you all have been talking to us about, is that, you know, we need that data, we need that information, because every time we have that, that's either evidence of progress that we're making, or it's information that we use to make our next decisions. But this is another example, and so it's really kind of an update on where we are as an agency in implementing a professional learning community process. And the reason why I got up here today is because I wanted to tell the backstory before they get to give you the progress update, because about, it was October of last year, when just, it was, there was this continual amount of information that we kept getting, whether it was enrollment in educator preparation programs, or whether it was an update from districts on the utilization of waivers for long-term subs or emergency teaching permits. It was updates from teacher retirement that showed more people exiting than coming back. And what we're seeing is that, you know, when school starts, generally districts are going to have filled positions, right? But what's happening is it's taking longer to fill those positions. We are finding fewer people who are fully qualified for those positions. In some cases, those positions are not being filled, and you're seeing movement in schools, whether it's more students are learning virtually because there aren't teachers to be there. So the dynamics and the pipeline of teachers has not been restored back to levels where we had plenty of educators, we had plenty of people in the workforce to meet the needs of school districts. And so last fall, I went to Carly and her team, and I said, you know, we've got so many things in place, but we don't have all of those connections through the system. We've got all these different pathways, but we don't have options for people who don't yet have their bachelor's degree. And if we're going to restore this pipeline, we really have to back up and think about, who is it that we're missing? And for people that don't already have a bachelor's degree, we had a lot of paraprofessionals, people who are working in schools. You have a lot of students who are interested. We've been seeing a lot of interest in our educators' rising organization. But because of that lack of connection there, we were losing out on a lot of talent that could be coming back and filling up our classrooms. And so we sat down, and we really said, okay, if we want to have this teacher residency model, what is that going to look like? And we started looking at everything, and I said, okay, so what is it going to take to launch by next fall? And they have worked hard, and I have pushed them hard. And it's been hard, and it's been frustrating, it's been exhausting. But we have launched Arkansas's first teacher residency model, and I don't think we realize how big of a deal that is. We have just been recognized by the Department of Labor for a registered teacher apprenticeship, okay? Some more information on that to come, that'll start hopefully in January. But even that piece there, what we have done in Arkansas that's different from any other state that has implemented this, is we pulled together multiple agencies. We pulled the Division of Higher Ed, the Division of Career and Technical Education, our Department of Education. We're working, having conversations with pre-K through our ABC programs of how can we take this opportunity and stair-step it along so that if a high school student is interested in a career in education, they can leave high school with a teaching credential that will allow them to get a job in their school system or any school system in the state of Arkansas, and immediately be an employee of the public school, earning credit toward teacher retirement while they go on to college and have the potential to go through college debt-free. You all have heard me tell you this all before, okay? But we did that by working with the Division of Higher Education and combining those courses. So whether it is a student in high school taking that course for concurrent credit, whether it's a paraprofessional who is working at a local community college taking those courses, or whether it's someone who goes on to a traditional program and enrolls and starts their pre-educator program of study, it's the same courses. It's the same content. It's access to that, those expectations of what a teacher's going to need to know and be able to do, that's taking that professional learning community process all the way through our education system and into the career field. So I am so pleased with where we are with this and where, you know, look at the progress for our start this year. And so I'm going to ask these three, because all three of them are making it happen. None of this would have been possible without their division. So I'm going to let them come and present that data to you, because I think that data is so promising. And I think in just a very short time, we're going to see those professionals in our schools learning to be teachers and becoming those teachers. And we're changing the workforce for education in Arkansas.
And Dan, if you can hear me, maybe you can pull that up on, it's the Arkansas teacher residency model slide, and share the screen from your end. That's under the commissioner's report.
I just want to say one thing. I went on the road trips with us, it wasn't just us. Dr. Pfeffer got in the car and went with us. It was a team across the board. And I just, and it was not just us three, it was our host staff has worked hard on this and continuing to do so. And just seeing these numbers and seeing them grow is just exponential. It's great. And so with that, I'm going to let Edie talk about our educator-rising programs, and Ross talk about that pre-educator pathways, because the pre-educator pathway is in CTE. And then the educator-rising is within my division. So it's, when she says it's really that collaboration across the divisions, and as you saw today at Grace Hill, that professional learning community, that's what it's all about.
Good afternoon, Edie Stewart, Director of Educator Preparation in Carly's Division. And we are super excited to share with you these numbers. If you take a look at the Ed Rising numbers, so Educators Rising is the student organization that we have associated with this pre-educator pathway. Want a little bit of backstory. One of the reasons why we have kind of shifted to the educator-rising model for a student organization is because it encourages diversity and inclusion in the teacher pipeline. One of our biggest issues has been not only increasing the teacher pipeline, but increasing diversity, not only in race, but also in gender. And our numbers have shown from last year to this year, growth in that area already. I have to brag on one of my team members, Raven Harris, is our educator-rising coordinator, state coordinator. And she has canvassed the state practically and encouraged our teacher leaders that are part of this program to basically cheerlead for students in their schools to become teachers, encouraging our districts to identify that rock star teacher, you know, that teacher that we have all had, that we wish we could clone and have all over our buildings, and encouraging them to buy into all of this. And they have in droves, and our numbers have reflected that. So we have, you know, gone from the numbers you'll see in front of you, where, you know, we've got, we had 136 pre-educator programs and studies in high schools. We are now at 803 students, student members. So that's in a year, y'all. That's a big, big deal. So to me, that is huge progress. Yes, it's the beginning of our teacher pipeline, but we've got to start somewhere. You know, we can't start, you know, at the end when they're in their Ed Prep program. We've got to start at the beginning when they're in high school, and that's exactly what we're doing. And then, you know, from there, where we're growing educators rising into our collegiate chapters. That's the other exciting part about this, because our Ed Prep programs, you don't start till you're a junior in college. Well, what happens when you're a freshman and sophomore? What I always say is our business schools and our, you know, biology departments, they're recruiting those freshmen and sophomore students. They're offering them food, they're having events, they're bringing in speakers. And our Ed Prep programs have just not gotten into that ballgame. Well, now they are. With Educators Rising, they can offer that as a student organization to those freshman students coming into their campuses and hold on to them. So it's kind of that bridge between high school, Educators Rising in high school, all the way through till we get them to licensure. So it's exciting, the buzz, if you will, people talking about it and being excited about it is incredible. And again, our numbers show that. We have also doubled our numbers with our collegiate chapters. So that's kind of our focus for this year, is growing that collegiate piece of it. So all that to say, super exciting stuff. The numbers are telling a story, and we really think that we're kind of on to something. And, you know, we talked about it this morning at Grace Hill, those silos. Well, we had some silos, and they're not there anymore. I mean, you know, we've got the Director of DCTE standing here with us, that, you know, arm-in-arm, we have been working together to get this to happen. And I'll let Ross talk about that pre-educator program of study.
Ross White, Director of the Division of Career and Technical Education. And so I think to just reiterate what they've already said is, obviously, our programming within career and technical education is programs of study. And our programs of study lead to pathways, hopefully, for careers for our students. And our big goal at the end is they leave with a credential. And so our pre-educator program of study, with the work we've done, obviously with the Department of Ed, and then our division, and then higher ed, has been a huge piece to be able to have these pre-educator programs and to get that concurrent credit, and then lead to that certified teaching assistant. And then that credential, those students can leave with that CTA and the ability that they can work while they're in school for a district. And like Ivy said earlier, already putting into teacher retirement, earning a wage. And then some of the things that were said at Grace Hill this morning when we were talking about teachers and teacher prep programs and that mentorship, being there in person, living it, is where you learn what it is to be an educator. And so we know that potential is there, and you can see the increase in the pre-educator programs of study. And then, of course, the big increase in those CTAs, those Certified Teaching Assistants that have been earned from up to 79, and we continue to just see that grow, is this vital piece of moving this forward. And then I know that Dr. Pfeffer mentioned it, but then the apprenticeship side of this now. You know, we've been working with the Department of Labor to get that part created for our state. It's quite an application, and, you know, without Carly's team and what we already have in place in our state, we wouldn't be there. So it was very exciting that that was actually, yeah. We got it yesterday, like, we are officially, with the U.S. Department of Labor as of yesterday, a registered K-12 apprenticeship. And so there's a lot of work we're still working on to get that rolled out in January. So you'll hear a lot more about it. But that was a huge feat in that process. And then I always say they joke, because I can speak apprenticeship language really well. And we have a lot of terms that we've been learning, I think, within the Department of Ed about what an apprentice means, but it will be a next great step in this overall teacher residency model for us as we move forward.
So Ross, if we see the term journeyman teacher, that will be different than any term that we've used previously.
Correct. So, you know, in the apprenticeship language, a journeyman is the, you know, the person who oversees the apprentice. So that will be our master lead teacher, but if we start to use, actually, Lori and I were talking about this morning about the term journeyman. And so we are definitely learning some new language and lingo from the other side of, you know, government, from the Department of Labor side, and mixing it in now with some Department of Ed, so.
And so I'm going to walk around and show you the certificate here in a minute, because I think it's really, really cool. Not very many states have this, we were not the first, and I was a little bit frustrated with that. But we were close, but I think our coursework and the partnerships that we have will put us ahead of the game, and I know other states are looking at it. But just the thought that our master and lead teacher- And I know other states are looking at it, but just the thought that our master and lead teachers. And the realization that they're starting to have that it's not just an impact that I can have on an individual in my school. But as a master or lead teacher, I can impact the entire state of Arkansas's teaching workforce. I can be a difference in whether or not we have a future generation of teachers. And if that isn't a retention tool for a teacher, I don't know what is because that impact on your students is tremendous. But we can have an impact on the future of educators in the state. So very, very proud of the opportunity that those future journeyman teachers, whatever language we ultimately. Please, that's gonna be pretty exciting. So anyway, that was it for, for us, but here it is.
Excellent. Don't go too far. I'm sure we'll have questions.
I was gonna say, we certainly would be open to questions on that. But from the, the issue of what this opens for wage reimbursement with the.
For those, those leading master teachers, the ability to provide them with stipends and also tuition reimbursement for our. Teacher residents and it'll start out about a hundred per year. But, you know, once you start and you're successful, then we find ways to, to continue that. So it's gonna be an amazing opportunity.
And then, you know, tomorrow is, if you see the note there Bentonville at night, which some of us will see tomorrow, has the largest number of CTAs. So certainly. If you have questions about what that looks like in process at, at the school level, they'll be able to help us with that too. But I'm very proud of this team. This, to me, this is one of the success stories of, of transformation. You know, in 2019, a lot of people thought, what, what is transformation going to do in education? And Ross could probably tell you, you know, there were rumors that CTE was going away. Or, you know, that we were gonna, you know, not have, you know, twelve month contracts for ag teachers. And all these things that were, that were sounded threatening for CTE. And what, what would it look like with ADE having higher ed and, and a new DESI division and all these things under one umbrella? But this is one of those, I think truly is a success story. I don't, I don't think we would have had a, as robust, a submission, a ro, as robust of an offering and opportunity for students. If it had not been for transformation. And the, you know, the vision of the government, what, you know, at least in our little slice of state government. What we could do better for our, our taxpayers, our students, for everyone in the state. So I just, I just want to say how much I appreciate Carly, Edie, Ross, Ivy, all the team that, that's not here. That have been such an integral part of making this happen. So thanks, team.
Questions on, on that?
I was just gonna add, I've shared with Dr. Pfeffer that I have a paraprofessional who had started college, had a family, had to work. And I remember her working in my class and saying, I'll just never be able to finish my degree. And when I started hearing about this and sharing it with her, it became a reality for her that she can finish her degree. She can continue to work, but she wasn't going to be able to do and she couldn't stop working to help support her family. But she can continue to work. She can finish her degree. She will be an incredible classroom teacher. And then her family is that much better for her, you know, the income potential, just being a certified classroom teacher. And so we know we have amazing paraprofessionals in our classrooms who are going to step into those classrooms, knowing how to teach. So much more than I knew stepping out of college. And so I just, the potential for this is, is life changing for these paraprofessionals and these students and for our state. So I'm very excited about it as well.
Any questions? Some of your comments that, that you said, I had, I had actually written down here when we started on the board. You, you could see whenever we would have presentations, you could see this silo and you could see this silo and this silo. But the transformation of everybody working together and then using the data to make decisions. When we do that, we get results like this that, that are going to have an impact on, on education. And so it, it is wonderful and to think about the, the before and the after. I don't know, Ivy, I'll put you on the spot. Do you know how many, before you started all this, how many educated, how many students would go into education in, in higher ed each year? I'm not putting you on the spot just to.
Well, and, and that's, that's the million dollar question because our data were always so lagging. I know goodness, we make, we can go back and pull to do the comparison, but I know at one time. I mean, you had several hundred in elementary alone. And, you know, we had gotten to a point where, you know, the totality of K-12 education was smaller than just the number of elementary. Students in, in an Ed Prep program. And so that's, you know, it just shrunk down to where. The number entering the programs and then leaving programs were not going to be sufficient to sustain.
Just to look at that one number of almost nine hundred students, high school students that were interested in education. And what that will potentially become for the teacher pipeline, you know, if we can hang on to them. I think that, that, that alone, I think, so working with the other initiatives, it is, it's wonderful. So I want to thank y'all for all of your hard work and, and dedication to students because it's gonna make a difference.
All right. And the last thing that I want to bring up, and Stacy's gonna come up and help me with this. But you have attached in the agenda of the report on Helen West Helena. Let me just say that Dr. Keith McGee has been, he's done a fabulous, and is doing a fabulous job. But there's been a lot of members of our team, as you look in this report. There's been a lot of support going into that district. Just looking out, I know Tim Kane, Director Kane came in a little bit ago. And from his team on the transportation side going down there. Where a district that last year did not have bus routes, you know, something that just is nuts and bolts, blocking and tackling coach. You know, and we did not have good systems for going and picking up kids and bringing them to school. Just simple things like that, that our team has gone. Down there and, and helped to develop those processes. I could go on and on, but it's in the report. Stacy has some comments on it. But it takes a leader. Dr. McGee has been the leader that we needed him to be, that, that district needs right now. To go in there and really assert priorities of what. What school needs to be for kids. And, and how the adults need to focus on the students and, and making that happen. And so it's not that people down there didn't, don't care. They do care. They needed help knowing exactly how to channel their energy and what processes and systems needed to be in place. So I'll let Stacy tackle that. And then I think she's gonna talk a little bit about Marvel Alain.
Yeah, okay. Stacy Smith, Deputy Commissioner. So I did attach the Helena West Helena written analysis of the supports going on there. One thing I did want to comment about is Dr. McGee has been doing listen and learn sessions with the community. One thing that this board did is you kept the board intact there. As we're doing listen and learn sessions, we get approached. The Dr. McGee gets approached, the OCSS team gets approached after every meeting with the sediment, uh, you need to dissolve the board. You need, you need to get rid of the board. There is such this distrust. But I say that to say, you know, our response is we're hopeful. And we're rolling up our sleeves and we're trying to keep the focus on the right work. We are trying to walk alongside the current board with training. And keeping everybody focused on why we're there. And so we're hopeful that we're gonna be able to keep the board intact and move forward. But it's something we're definitely watching. Dr. McGee has had two different board meetings. He's had a couple of special board meetings. And at this point, people are working together. When there have been moments where maybe outside of what you're supposed to be doing, he's been able to make phone calls, give a correction. And people have, thank you for letting me know. I mean, they're responding. So we're hopeful. We're hopeful. There is a lot of, there's breakdown in trust in the community on different levels. In the city government, school governance. I mean, it, it's not just in one spot. Okay? So our goal is to walk on, walk alongside and hopefully kind of restore some, some structure pieces there. One of the points I just, just wanted to share is there, there are a lot of international teachers that are being brought into the Delta. Okay, just in Helena West Helena alone, I think we're around ten. With Lake County, I, I saw their post for Anna Strong at the elementary where they were showing, welcome to our, our seven teachers from the Philippines. So, you know, as far as our team, my team, learning about visas and international teachers and what's that, what it takes. Housing in the Delta is still a big conversation on Lake County, county housing, especially for the Philippines, teachers coming from the Philippines where they live. And a lot of times you see them renting a house and four teachers living together. So they're establishing these communities and there's these support pieces that are going on that I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of. Okay? I will say, I have been, we, we have been surprised. I, I have been personally surprised at, at some of. I was expecting there to be a much more of a disconnect. But at, at times I'm, I'm very encouraged by the teachers that are coming in internationally. And, but there definitely is a cultural piece that you have to support. They're away from their families. So, so there are pieces there that we have to support. And so our districts are having to create that plan of retention recruitment that's a little bit different. So Helena West Helena is moving along. I was on campus there last week. I was on the campus of Lake County last week. Both school districts have started. We still had a successful start and, and they're moving along. Quick comment on Pine Bluff. One thing that, that this board, we talked about doing a working board session. And so it's kind of been thrown out possibly on the fifteenth late afternoon. Possibly do a Zoom work session on what it would look like to put a local governance piece back for Pine Bluff. And so I'm gonna pause for a second and let you guys decide if the fifteenth would work for that.
Any comments on September fifteenth?
The afternoon, Commissioner, what did we say? Three, three thirty?
I mean, I have a, I'll be in Magnolia in the first part of the day, but I can be back by three o'clock.
So three thirty on, on the fifteenth for Zoom or in person, do you?
I would love to, I mean, I think a Zoom is appropriate. If you guys feel comfortable doing that, we could do a Zoom one. If you guys want to come in person, we can do that as well.
Which would, I think, be effective? I mean, you think?
I mean, I, I think we could do it effectively either way. Okay. That's really just what the, your, the pleasure of the board is.
And I think, I mean, the purpose of that will be. Mapping out, you know, the, the path forward for, you know, how, how you want us to proceed on receiving. Applications or resume, whatever it might be of, of individuals in the district interested in serving on a board. Process of how we will go about selecting and, and all those details. You know, we, we did this with, with Little Rock and it's, it's been a while since we've done it. So we'll. It, it will be, it will be different. It always seems to be different. There's no cut and dry method for doing this. But it's how, how we establish that process for that gradual bringing back an element of local governance. And, and keeping the, the positive things going. And at the same time, that gradual release to, of, of certain decisions to that local community.
Would September fifteenth, three thirty work for everyone if we did it in Zoom then? Everybody agreeable?
Okay, I think we're good with that. Okay, so we'll be sure and set that up. And Coach Hill was pretty gracious to say we're in deep. We are in deep. But he was, he was really the one who organized the meeting and introduced me to some other community people. And we were able to make some connections with the school district. So kudos to you as well. So it was a beneficial day for me, most definitely. Marvel Alain, I did want to kind of bring this to your attention. Marvel Alain was the school district that we released from fiscal distress last year, if you remember. Their superintendent was sick at the board meeting and they had someone stand in and then he ended up passing away. After we released them from fiscal distress, they're struggling right now. It, I would almost consider possibly getting to a crisis point. I've been in contact with their superintendent frequently. We're sending a team next week. We've been sending people for. Support, but they're struggling with their finances. They're struggling with student discipline. They're struggling with their high school principal. Retired after school started. They've just had a lot of different things. I don't believe they have most of their classes, that all of their classes covered. I think what they're doing in the high school to cover that most of their coursework is virtual. Which has had an increase of probably student discipline issues. We have lots of kids who are lacking credits. So we're sending a team down there for analysis. We've got our financial team looking at some of their financial pieces right now. But there is a good chance next month I will be in front of you with information about Marvel Alain. So just, I just wanted you to aware of that. I didn't want next month for you to go, where did this come from? But we're concerned and we're hearing concern from them as well. And I think probably what we're seeing more than anything is, is what I'm hearing about really is a lot of student behavior, which to me is a sign of a crisis. Four kids calling out that we're not getting what we need on a daily basis. So just know that, that, that could possibly be coming. Their numbers are very low. I think they are under three hundred. They were under three fifty before, but I believe that they've fallen under three hundred. But those are all those pieces that we're gonna be digging into. Okay, so, so just wanted you to be aware of that. Next month, we had planned for Pine Bluff to be at this meeting to do their report to the public. But we're gonna push that to next month. Since we were in Northwest Arkansas, we thought that was most appropriate. And kind of had Earl tentatively scheduled then. I'm gonna push them back to November for them to come. And kind of do their report to the public for the board as well. Does that work? Okay, appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Anyone have a question or comment?
So you had mentioned about the, uh, the Philippines. So there are like when, um, new people, I was thinking about men in the military. So they dropped me down in Daharan. And we're going to places that we don't know their customs and things and the, in foreign countries. That they adapt soldiers to, to make sure that we're not, that we're blending. So how is that taking place for the teachers? Because that has to be a culture shock. And how are their transition? Because there's so much, there's, there's such stark difference.
No, it's a great, it's a great question. And I had those same questions and concerns. And this actually started, you started seeing this trend happen a couple of years ago. I believe it's from Four City. Is that right?
Dumas too.
Dumas. So you kind of started seeing it in those areas. So you kind of have this organized group. Marlena, who actually used to work at the department, she's kind of organizing this. She's from the Philippines. She actually has her brother that is still in the Philippines, who is part of the educator workforce there. So they have this like tie between the two. And so as these teachers arrive, there is someone who is greeting them, setting them up, finding them housing. So there's kind of this community piece going on that they're assisting with. The school district, it has been bringing folks in to learn more about their, the culture of the teachers. And also having moments where we're teaching about the culture of the school, the culture of the students and trying to make some of those connections. In Helena West Helena, where I talked to you guys or in the report, we talked about having lead teachers and mentors assigned. Most of the teachers from the Philippines have someone directly assigned to them. We're trying to do more of the co-teaching that you saw today. Where when a teacher has an off period, if they had extra off periods, they're pushing into support. So they're trying to build some of those pieces into their retention and recruitment plans.
So because when I, what I've heard today here dealing with challenged learning. And, and the type of teaching that needs to take place in Northwest Arkansas. To make sure that we're, that we're captivating these type, the learning here, which, which you and I both know is drastically different from the Delta. So that person's not getting that type of treatment. So that person's not getting that type of treatment. I mean, so I think we got to look at this holistically because that person coming in from Philippines has nothing that these up here have for special education, which that's almost probably the common. Well, when we're looking at those numbers, that's, that's the common assessment that we're going to deal with in that population of students. And so now you have a person certified in the, in the core, in the, in the, in the teaching area, but all this other stuff.
They don't have.
Don't have.
No, you're, so if I had to say, what was the hardest thing I've ever done in my education career, working with the level five schools and support is it? And my eyes have been open to things that I thought and what I thought and how we should approach it, 180.
Because I mean, because, and I'm, and you and I both, because we know on, on ground, I mean, you know, there's one thing to have policies, one thing to have procedures, but then there's reality.
Exactly. And something with school districts that get classified on level five support and, you know, there's always this fear that the state's going to come take you over. Right? You'll hear it in district meetings or superintendent, you'll hear that. When, when it gets to the point where a school district is classified on level five and we're moving in, basic structural pieces are not in place, such as not having a bus route, such as having high school principals who don't know to put in a duty schedule. Basic premises that are things that we think are common and that everybody has it, these schools do not have these pieces in place. My staff and staff that we send into support, a lot of times when they first move in, they are taken back. They are not, when they, when they move into support, everybody thinks they know what they need. And you're having to step back and say, "Whoa, we're having to break this down." So you're correct. What we saw up here and where folks are and what we're, we've got two different things going on. Now, the practices for inclusion. My staff, I have someone on my staff that is, specializes in students with disabilities. And she's actually working with the teachers in all of our districts on inclusion and practices and push-in. So we have somebody right there working alongside, but we got a long ways to go.
You know, I, I just might have my last year on the board. And one thing I would say, just based on exactly what you bring up, that we have to consider, Commissioner, and I think this is something way above, you know, our board, but we have to take into major because consideration. Because I've served on a lot of boards, bank boards, whatever, and there's a certain level of expertise to get on boards. And our most prized possession in the state of Arkansas, in the country, is our children. But you have no prerequisites to get to serve on a board. So the reason that you just said what you said for what's happening is because the people who are oftentimes on the board, those are checks and balances that we have to look. So how can you get on the school board? Popularity? I mean, expertise? So they're making all these decisions. So the reason what you just said happened because of the governance of the local boards to get checks and balances. And I think if we're really going to change the governor system of, of, of what you just said, now, now we're down there fixing because the local governing board did not have the checks and balances in place to be accountable. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we know that, we understand that.
Feel like I'm in a quiz show. I want to give the right answers, Coach.
I just want to make sure.
Let me roll the sleeves up here.
I just want to make sure I'm right. I mean, because I've seen it and we know what's going on. And so we let people continue, run.
Dr. Hill, I think what the attorneys would tell us is that that's why, under the Lakeview case, the, the Supreme Court said very clearly under our constitution, public education ultimately is the state's responsibility and that we can no longer, and this is what they said, it's not verbatim, but they said you can no longer just allow local districts and local leadership to do, expect to do the things and depend on them and them be the ones responsible. They said ultimately the state is responsible. And that's why you all have had to make very hard decisions in your time as, as a member of this board. We are doing everything we can to help districts. And they're, I mean, we have really engaged more in the last several years with School Boards Association and with boards themselves at the local level to try to build that capacity so that, you know, but ultimately this is where it comes. And so, you know, we, we, we do, we do see, I have seen improvement and I'm just, you know, we worked a lot with Little Rock and, and I think if you look at where they are now as a district, you know, that things are, that they don't, they have different conversations now than they did in 2013, 2012, 2011. And so it's, but it's just 260 of them out there and that, that makes a difference.
I guess my, my, my last question, and, and because we, I've seen it firsthand and that's the only reason I, you know, when you're there and somebody starts asking questions. So I'm just wondering why there are no prerequisites for some local boards? Because I need to.
And it's simply, it is, it's simply in the statute. It's, I think, 18 years old and a registered voter of your district.
And then we wonder why it is. And I mean, that's, that's, you know, it's kind of like a football play. You know, you don't coach, you know, you're going to lose, right? Like you say, you're not blocking the tackle, but then you won't score.
But for the most part, I think board members are, whether, whatever their backgrounds are, they are doing what they believe is, is the right thing for their communities and their students. It's the exceptions that.
Which then puts us in a crisis situation.
Exactly.
And, and so for the average, so it's that kid who, who may not have that support system if Stacy's not there. Or the bus, get to, get to the, what you just said, get into the Delta. But I just, you know, as, as, as you look based on when you said, will you give me my exit interview next year? You know, and I'm on my, on my last time. I mean, I think this is an issue that's leading to a crisis that we, that we as a board has, have, have responsibility to try to somehow take it to the legislature to address and say, "Hey, based on this criteria, we're going out here." And now we have to bring in different things to fix something that if we had a governor, governance process, I just wanted to bring it up and I notice, I'm good. Thanks.
One last thing that I want to add to, and Stacy mentioned, Merlina McCullough. She, she was part of the ADE team a number of years ago, has family connections to the Philippines. That's something that is very different now than it was just a few years ago. Those professionals that are coming here from the Philippines have a support structure that they did not previously have. And, you know, you can follow her on Facebook. She's grabbed, you know, getting the groups together and they're, they're finding the Filipino restaurants around the state and they're taking road trips and they're doing things together. But at the same time, they're, they're trying to build that support and grow understanding. And so I think, you know, where, where those opportunities are, you know, we're going to try to make sure we support them and because if they come here, America's still the place people want to be, Coach. You know, they, they, people are still coming here. And, you know, if they, they're coming here and becoming part of the, the fabric of our, of our communities, I think that's a very positive thing. Yeah, I was hoping Carly, I couldn't see, I couldn't see you, but I was hoping you might have something to add to that.
We, my staff has actually zoomed with Marlena twice. So we are trying to put in those extra supports and get it together. We're working on a face-to-face because Secretary Key would like to meet with her face-to-face, but she's just been boots on the ground right now. And she takes them on road trips to the Asian market in Memphis. She is there two days a week personally, going into the classrooms and doing a lot of the things you saw today, co-teaching or whatever they need. So we are trying to make a plan to put in more supports for them because we know this is not going away.
And the culture, you know, of them.
We're happy to, we're happy to take qualified teachers from any foreign country like that, even Texas.
Now, I came from Texas. Come on now.
Do we have any foreign country hiring our qualified teachers?
What'd you say?
Do we have any foreign countries coming over here hiring our, our, our certified teachers?
Well, you, you see, like the teaching in China? You see the Zoom online education? Yeah, you see some, some of those classes.
I do see some of that, you know, I mean, our own Hope Allen, our Hope Worsham now, she.
Years ago, went to Europe.
Years ago, she went, she, she taught in England. So yeah, it does happen. Yeah, because they, they want American teachers to come and, and teach English and, and those things. So it does happen. It's just not as visible to us because of reciprocity. They're licensed, they may be licensed in Arkansas, but we may not know if they go somewhere else.
And, and I know teacher pay has been a pain, but they're coming over here because of the pain. They're coming over here because they're making money here that they're not making at home. So they're just a different perspective. So, thank you.
I just want to point out to you, I know it's distressing when we hear about these districts that are, you know, having crisis or whatever the situation may be, when we have to take different actions. But I just want this board to be aware how far that we have come under Secretary Key and, and your leadership in the department. I remember when we, when we first, when I first started, schools would get labeled academic distress and, and we'd point fingers and say, "You need to do better." And to do better, you need to fill out this report and, and this other report and this report over here. And now if you'll listen to the, the people at the department, all they keep saying over and over is support. How can we support you? How can we help you? How can we come alongside you? What, what do you need? And it, it, it's, it's no longer finger pointing. It's no longer, you know, you got to do better. It's, we want to help you be better because the kids, it's student-centered, it's student-focused. We want the best for these kids. And just in these short few years, we've come such a long way as a state. And I know it's because of your leadership and, and your team that have worked and, and changed things so much for us to, to, to get the right focus. You know, what, what can we do to support and get kids what they need? And so, you know, we still have problem areas, yes, but we're going to do whatever we can do to help those kids. Thank you.
Just the last thing that I'd say as part of my report, and see that next item is inclusive practices. Matt's already given the presentation, Jeff, Robin. And again, I'll just say how much I appreciate the tremendous effort that a special ed team is, has undertaken here and what the work they're doing. But I just want to add my voice to the appreciation for Rogers, for Dr. Perry, for your team hosting us and your hospitality for lunch, getting to meet a couple of your board members and your cabinet-level staff and, and the, the team at Grace Hill and so many others. You know, it's, it's, we, we have missed the opportunity to get out just because of COVID and everything, of getting out, seeing what's going on in the districts. Always refreshing to get to come out and then to, to turn your boardroom over to us like this. I just can't say enough, thank you so much for working with our team to make this happen.
Thank you.
Oh, I do. Yes, thank you, Stacy. I forgot if we still have the video where we can, I, I think it was here. Okay. Oh, there. Yeah, it was at the very end of the previous presentation. There it is.
To the elated class of 2022 and to the relieved parents, cheering siblings and dear friends who supported us. Salutations to the caring faculty, administrators and staff who fed our brains and nurtured our souls. I would also like to thank my fellow valedictorians, Emily Curran, Sophia Fraz, Charlie Mellon and Jessica Linemeyer for giving me the honor of addressing you. Rollins College class of 2022, today we celebrate our shared achievements. I know something about shared achievements because I am affected by a form of autism that doesn't allow me to speak. My neuromotor issues also prevent me from tying my shoes or buttoning a shirt without assistance. I have typed this speech with one finger with a communication partner holding a keyboard. I am one of the lucky few non-speaking autistics who have been taught to type. That one critical intervention unlocked my mind from its silent cage, enabling me to communicate and to be educated like my hero Helen Keller. My situation may be extreme, but I believe Rollins has shown all of us how sharing gives meaning to life. During my freshman year, I remember hearing a story about our favorite alumnus, Mr. Rogers. When he died, a handwritten note was found in his wallet. It said, "Life is for service." You have probably seen it on the plaque by Stronghold. Life is for service. So simple, yet so profound. Classmates, you have shared your passion for service within our community. Our friends in the sororities and fraternities raise money for so many worthy causes. Our friends at Pinehurst weave blankets for the homeless. The examples are too numerous to list. Rollins has instilled in all of us that service to others gives meaning to our own lives and to those we serve. Viktor Frankl wrote about the power of sharing in his book, Man's Search for Meaning. While suffering in the Nazi concentration camp at Auschwitz, he noted how, despite the horror, there were prisoners who shared their last crust of bread. He writes, "Everything can be taken from a man, but one thing, the last of the human freedoms, to choose one's attitude in any given set of circumstances, to choose one's own way." We all have been given so much, including the freedom to choose our own way. Personally, I have struggled my whole life with not being heard or accepted. A story on the front page of our local newspaper reported how the principal at my high school told a staff member, "The retard can't be valedictorian." Yet today, here I stand. Each day, I choose to celebrate small victories and today, I am celebrating a big victory with all of you. The freedom to choose our own way is our fundamental human right and it is a right worth defending, not just for us, but for every human being. I want to publicly thank Rollins College for taking a chance on me, for caring about every student, for being a place where kindness lives. Dear classmates, today we commence together, but from here, we will choose our own ways. For me, I have a dream. Yes, just like Martin Luther King Jr., I have a dream. Communication for all. There are 31 million non-speakers with autism in the world who are locked in a silent cage. My life will be dedicated to relieving them from suffering in silence and to giving them voices to choose their own way. What is your dream? How will you use your Rollins education to fulfill your mission? How will you rise up to meet the unprecedented challenges of our time? Whatever our life choices, each and every one of us can live a life of service to our families, to our communities and to the world. And the world can't wait to see our light shine. So my call to action today is simple. Tear off a small piece from your commencement program and write "Life is for Service" on it. Yes, we gave you the pens to really do it. Let's start a new tradition. Take a photo and post it on social media, then put it in your wallet or some other safe place, just as Mr. Rogers did. And when we see each other at our reunions, we can talk about how our commencement notes reminded us to serve others. We are all called to serve as an everyday act of humility, as a habit of mind, to see the worth in every person we serve, to strive to follow the example of those who chose to share their last crust of bread. For to whom much is given, much is expected. God gave you a voice. Use it. And no, the irony of a non-speaking autistic encouraging you to use your voice is not lost on me. Because if you can see the worth in me, then you can see the worth in everyone you meet. My fellow classmates, I leave you today with a quote from Alan Turing, who broke the Nazi encryption code to help win World War II. Sometimes it is the people no one imagines anything of who do the things no one can imagine. Be those people. Be the light. Fiat Lux. Thank you. Thank you.
All of that.
Yeah. You have to serve.
Now that's the end of my report.
All right. So I think those are great words for us as we serve this board and, and serve the students of Arkansas. So, so. Ms. Frehna, are there any public comments? Mr. Sutton, you're, you're, you're away from us, but I am in need of a motion to adjourn.
Well, I'm sorry I wasn't able to attend Disney World, like, like all of you down there. But some of us have to make a living. But Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right. You have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Sutton? Is there a second? Second by Mr. Henderson. All in favor? Thank you all for coming and thank you Rogers so much. Again, we are very appreciative of all you did for us today. Thank you.
Recording stopped.